I think we will get going. All right. 6:33 PM, Monday, September 21st. I'm going to call the Board a select meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. And I'm going to ask people who are not actually going to be speaking initially to mute themselves and then unmute themselves when they are on the agenda to speak. I will start asking if anybody has any public comment they want to make on any items that are not on the agenda. And I know that we have one of those already because Steve didn't email saying that somebody wanted to speak.
Eli, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, Gary.
At the beginning of the pandemic we were still in the middle of, the state passed some sort of legislation to put aside local laws, which a lot of us didn't understand. It seemed like an overreaction. From what I've learned as of July, the state gave the towns the right to reinstate local laws such as the plastic bag ban, which many of us worked hard on to get passed. It was passed for good reason, and I think it's a source of pride for our town. We were one of the first towns to ever do this. Maybe this is more a question towards Greg or Town Council if they're present, but what is your perception of what we can do regarding this? From what I understand, as of July, the towns could tell the merchants that they want to reinstate the laws, the plastic bag ban law, and give them 30 days or 60 days to go through their stocks to set things up the way they were prior to COVID. A business like Crosby's shouldn't need anything close to, anything over 30 days, in my opinion, because they're part of a chain, and they actually told me years ago they can easily shuffle around their supplies. Do you have any response to this?
So the Board hasn't taken this up yet. It's something which has been on my horizon to come back to and go around and inquire the businesses and see what their status is. So I think that that's probably what we'll do is we will, as we go into the fall here, take some time to inquire from the businesses what their actual state is and then see about switching us back over to the pre-COVID requirements to buy well ahead. Greg, do you have any input on this?
So they did announce that reusable bags are fine, so people can be using those. And yes, we can reinstitute the plastic ban as far as I know. So that's something you could take up at your next meeting.
From all the research we did when we stated the law, we learned nobody has room for much stock, and most people didn't have more than a couple of weeks of supply of plastic bags. I would suggest you don't need to do a thorough research project on every single business in town that might have reverted back to using plastic bags. I would suggest that giving notice to all the businesses and a 30-day period should be more than sufficient from what I've learned from all the experience we've been through.
Okay. Well, we will take it up at one of our next meetings, meeting or two. Not going to make a decision tonight because this is not actually on the agenda, but we do appreciate you bringing it up, and we will take it on shortly.
Thanks for taking some action. A lot of people are concerned. Thank you.
And a question from John Lewis about the playground on the corner of Brook and Norwood. Go ahead, John. If you want to unmute yourself. Okay. So we certainly won't be taking that or addressing that comment. All right, I'm going to move on into the first agenda item. So we had a public hearing scheduled, which we're passing over because the applicant withdrew withdrew the application. That was the entertainment license for Manchester path tennis. And so we'll move on to agenda item number two, which was a discussion around the proposed So I'm going to ask Greg to go into the details here, but I want to say a couple of things. We're limiting this discussion to about 10 minutes. The two points that we're going to cover here tonight, we're only going to cover two aspects of this and then ask deal with the fines and how we want to, how we wish to, may wish to proceed on the right-of-way issues. And we're not going to spend any more than about 10 minutes or so on this. So Greg, do you want to go into the details?
Sure. Thank you, Eli. So first, on the question of fine, so state statute does allow the tree warden to issue fines, the $20 for violations of any regulations that we might have in place, and they allow a $500 fine for an unpermitted removal of a public shade tree. But that's through a criminal process, and you can, you have to go through the courts to receive those, that kind of fine, to successfully receive that fine. To make it a noncriminal disposition, you would need to go to town meeting to have voters approve a set of fines and penalties that you could implement through basically a ticketing process. So that requires town meeting approval to have that done. So if you're interested in the ticketing approach to fines and penalties, you'll need to wait until a town meeting approval of a local bylaw. So you could bifurcate a possible regulation. You could go forward with a regulation now, which you can adopt. It's actually promulgated through the tree board, and then you can adopt that on your own motion. And then if you wanted to go forward with a town bylaw approach in order to have the noncriminal ticketing process, then we would, we could pursue that come next spring's annual town meeting. So that's sort of issue number one. And then issue number two concerns defining the right-of-way. So we only have the authority to regulate trees that are within the prescribed town right-of-way. Right-of-ways are typically wider than the paved section of a road and typically beyond the sidewalk. They are, for some roads, they are well-defined. For a lot of our roads, they are not well-defined, since many of our roads are quite old, talking a few hundred years old. So we don't necessarily have good survey or meets and bounds descriptions of all of our right-of-ways. The state statute does allow for presumption of what the right-of-way is, subject to if a landowner can prove through their own deed and survey or research that the right-of-way is smaller or bigger than what we are presuming it to be, then they supersede what you generally think it might be. So it is okay, Town Council feels it is okay to pick a number beyond the pavement. Right now, the proposal is for 11 feet beyond the pavement to basically be the area where trees that fall within that space are designated a public shade tree. But just understand that it could be challenged, and it could be successfully challenged, that it might not be that wide, or it might be, in some cases, wider than that. So I just wanted to highlight that as a potential issue going forward. There are some other, some editing and bringing the proposed bylaw that you took a look at at your last meeting back in August. There's some editing that we need to do just to bring it into compliance with the tree law, which is chapter 87 of the state statutes. Most of those are not very major. It's pretty minor editing. But these were the two issues that I wanted to get some feedback on before we proceed with a new version.
I'm going to annoy Eli and bring up a different, slightly different issue in the town center and along some roads. It's very clear what is a deliberately planted town tree. In other areas, Norway maples, I love trees. I like almost all trees. I don't like any Norway maples, just as an aside. Norway maples have seeded themselves in thickets, and I have a great deal of trouble understanding why I should replace a tree, because I'm taking it out because it's blocking other trees. I think this is something that has more applicability downtown than it does in more rural parts of town.
Okay. So rather than debating that tonight, since we have limited time, I'm just going to ask friends of Manchester's Trees, F-O-M-T, take that comment and discuss it, but not at this meeting tonight.
I have two questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
First question is, Greg, you mentioned that there was a $500 cap under state statute for a fine that would be imposed unless it went through town meeting. If it goes through town meeting, can that fine be as stated in the proposed policy, which is $1,000?
No, it would have to be limited to the 500 as well, because that's what the statute allows. If it's a criminal, if it's a noncriminal, I'll have to double-check with Town Council. So the ticketing process, the noncriminal disposition of violations is limited to $300. So I'm not sure, I'll have to double-check with Council if we could go to the 500. But I know that 500 is as high as we can go.
So a developer could come in and take out town trees and only be charged $300 a tree maximum if this went through town meeting?
Well, I'll have to double-check. It may be, we may be allowed to do the 500 per tree.
Okay. Even 500 seems like it's not going to stop some developers from going ahead with that.
I'll double-check with Council on that, but I, my understanding, my conversation with them was that we were limited by what the statute allows.
Okay. And in terms of your delineation of the policy saying that it's 11 feet that's being claimed as the right-of-way, that's not the way the policy reads to me. There's two designations, and the first one is town tree, which is anything within six feet of the street side. And then the extra five feet that makes up the 11 feet would be quote-unquote protected trees, as defined in the policy, eight inches in diameter at breast height.
So the statute, sorry. So the statute doesn't recognize such a distinction. So the statute gives us authority for what are called public shade trees, and those are all the trees within the town right-of-way. So they don't make the distinction that is being tried to be made in the proposed policy. So I went to the 11 feet, assuming you still wanted to try to protect to that limit, and you can do so if you make the presumption that that 11 feet beyond the pavement falls within the town right-of-way. And you could make the distinction about, you know, different sized trees, if you want to use the eight-inch diameter as a demarcation between what's protected and what isn't. You can certainly do that. But we can't make a distinction between the six feet and the 11 feet, per se, in terms of those two proposed categories. Statue only recognizes one category of public trees.
Greg, I have a question. So really, we're talking about that extra five feet, which may or may not necessarily be entirely public land. It may infringe on private land in some instances, correct?
It may, or we may actually have a wider
Okay. If it's wider, then it doesn't make any difference. That's fine. Nobody's going to ask questions. That's a public decision. Have there been issues that have come up in, say, the past two or three years where there's been questions or concerns about, you know, overlapping that right-of-way, that 11 feet overlapping into private land where there's a tree that maybe the owner wants to do one thing and the public wants to do something else?
So I would say we probably, in terms of the types of concerns or issues that arise, we probably are dealing more with people who want to claim that it's a town tree so that the town is responsible.
Yes, I understand. They want to unload it, yeah.
Yeah, they want to unload it. So I would say that's probably more the case, rather than us wanting to not have access to a tree.
Okay. So my question in that situation, of course, and I'm aware of at least one instance in that situation, then the town has to decide, are we going to take it down or not? Maybe the tree's dead. Okay?
Right.
It may or may not be endangering any structures, but it's up to the town to decide what they want to do.
Correct. And if it's a, you know, as a public tree, before we take it down, there has to be, well, actually, there doesn't have to be a hearing. There's a little nuance here. The tree warden does have the ability to take down a tree that is an imminent danger. But if the tree warden actually has the authority to hold his or her own hearing, and then if anyone objects at the tree warden's hearing, then it can be kicked up to the select board. We, in the past, have always just combined those two hearings, just for simplicity's sake, but you don't have to. You could actually hold two different hearings.
Okay. So expanding to that extra five feet, what that does is that would put more responsibility on the town for more trees.
Correct.
Which we would then have to maintain, and if they're sick or dead, or if there's a problem or issue, it's our responsibility. Okay.
Yeah. The converse of that is that we're able to avoid people taking down those trees.
That's right. I mean, that's the flip side of that.
That's the plus side.
Your indication is most instances, or at least the instances you recall, it's people that say, hey, can you take care of this?
Right.
Yes, okay.
I think it's also important to recognize in this whole issue of people asking to have trees taken down, and how wide is the zone, is that up until the last year or so, there was a presumption of a 10-foot zone by the Department of Public Works. And that this policy was brought out, my understanding was that this policy was brought out to clarify what the zones are and how they work.
You're right, Jeff. So I think
So it's not like, John, that there's this enormous expansion of the town zone.
No, no, I don't think that's the case. I'm just wondering how many people want to do something, you know, whether they're looking for the town to do things rather than that they want to do something themselves.
I'd like to add, I have a question and also one point to the tree policy. It also enables the town to properly prune and maintain the trees, thereby extending the life of the trees. So hopefully, there will be fewer trees needing to be taken down. But I think that was also one of the points of the tree policy. However, I did have a question, and I guess this goes to you, Greg. Do these, does this also equally apply to private roads, of which we have many?
No, it does not apply to public, private roads.
Okay. All right.
Eli, could I ask a question?
Sure. Go ahead, Gary.
I seem to remember reading a law in the state of Massachusetts where if somebody maliciously took down a neighbor's tree or a tree blocking their view, that they had to pay a fine based on a multiplier of the retail value of the square footage of the tree, something like five times the street value of the tree, which was a substantial amount. Unless you had a fine of some substantial amount, people will just pay, as was stated earlier, to do what they want for their own personal purposes. I suppose Greg will look into that.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm happy to do a little more research. You know, that might be a formula that's used in private litigation.
Eli, may I say something on behalf of Friends of the Trees?
Yes, you may.
I just wanted to set a context for what the tree policy is, and I think Becky touched on it a bit, which is, it was, and Jeff as well, we were trying to codify what existing practice had been. And there had been, I think, as you may recall, a few over the last six, nine months, hearings that are, I mean, were a little bit loosey, where the principles, let's say, of decision-making were far from crystal clear. So the attempt, the policy's attempt is to make things clear, to get it in writing, and the boundary that is clear for town trees is the six-foot boundary. The boundary for so-called protected trees, which goes from six feet to 11 feet, is essentially an opportunity for us to figure out what is a tricky thing. Because everything goes through the town tree warden, but it's, it's an attempt to learn how we can implement things where there's a tree in that zone, maybe on private land, that has a benefit, that's a public benefit. And so to figure out, get the situations clearly and focus and figure out. And what Jeff said is there were two, earlier is that there were two different boundaries. One was a five-foot one, and one was a further one. We did look at a number of other town ordinances, and some have boundaries that are as wide as 20 feet from the edge of the street. So we were just attempting to do what had, to clarify what the rules were here in town.
Right. Because people like to have concrete things that they can measure to assess whether or not they have an issue that they will need to fix. And so one of the options, I guess, was to simply say the tree that's within the right-of-way needs to be covered by this policy, but then everybody's going to ask, well, what's the right-of-way? And then it becomes vague. So that's the point, part of the point of the policy. The issue is whether or not being very specific is going to cause us some more downstream legal headache than another policy. Is that fair to say, Greg?
Yes, you need to sort of balance that. Those are the competing interests there.
So the six-foot, the initial six-foot, there's really no ambiguity or question about that. That's clearly going to be within the right-of-way in all circumstances. And the question is, in some of these other cases, would that, would the right-of-way actually extend out as far as distance? Is that fair?
Oh, sorry, Greg. Go ahead.
Either way. So part of the problem is that roads don't necessarily go down the middle of the right-of-way. You know, over time, a road may shift to one side of the right-of-way versus the other. So there may be cases, you find out that the road is actually on the very edge of the right-of-way. But we just, you know, to do that kind of research is almost impossible, to do it exhaustively and extensively. So this presumption is logical, and Council was comfortable with the 10-to-11-foot presumption, just with the understanding that if someone comes along and says, no, I have concrete evidence that my private land is within three feet of the paved area, we'll have to concede that, assuming that we believe the evidence is credible.
Okay.
And there is another provision of law, just to complicate it a little bit. With owner's permission, you can go 20 feet beyond the right-of-way and still call it a shade tree, a public tree, but it does take the private landowner's permission to do that.
Yeah. Take it off. So
Eli?
Yeah, go ahead, Becky.
I just, is it possible to make, or not, is it possible, would it make sense to make two slight modifications to the 11-foot protected tree zone to say, unless town land, or town right-of-way extends further, or by permission of the property owner, or specific permission?
She, we could. I think that that potentially muddies the waters again.
So I really think you need to stick to the statutory definition of a public tree. So that is any tree within the town right-of-way or
Okay.
up to 20 feet beyond if the town, if the private owner has given permission.
So drop the 11-foot delineation in this document?
No, you can keep the 11-foot, but I would drop the protected tree classification. It would just be a public tree, and the public trees are either within the public right-of-way, and we're presuming that to be 11 feet, or whatever number you've settled on, but you presume it to be 11 feet beyond the pavement, or it's a tree that the landowner has given permission for the town to declare a public tree that's within 20 feet of that. Actually, it's 20 feet, it's within 20 feet of that 11-foot line.
Wow.
So it's actually 31 feet back from the pavement.
You know what? May I make a suggestion? Because I know, Eli, you were trying to confine the time here. Can we get together with you, Greg, and do some tweaking of the draft and get it, do, I forget who said bifurcate it, but take out, pull out the fines and just get the policy in decent condition and get it back to the Board, maybe for the next meeting or the meeting after, given the discussion tonight? It's very helpful to hear people's concerns.
Yeah, I think that's fine. It would be very helpful just to hear, is the Board comfortable with the presumption approach?
I'm comfortable with the presumption approach, provided I'm comfortable with the presumption approach, provided that the real intent here is that the policy is explicit about what our presumptions are, what the distances are, so that we don't end up immediately having to, you know, answer other questions that require significant research. Yeah, I think it's going to cause us some one way or another, we're going to run into some headaches on the edge cases and gray areas. I know that.
Sure. What you do now?
Right. But I still think it'll benefit everybody if there's some well-defined distances that they can measure and say, yeah, I need to pay attention to what's going on. I think it's, I think that's important. I'll make one other comment. I know members, some members of the finance committee are going to want to hear some information about these distances and the impact that they may have to potential financial impact they may have. So this policy is going to have to run right through finance committee for some comments as well. Other members of the board?
I think it merits going, you know, keeping going on this.
Jeff?
I do as well.
John?
Yes, especially those definitions, they need to be more specific.
Anne?
Yes.
All right, we'll do another iteration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on to the agenda item number three, a public hearing for conduit construction on Summer and Beach Streets for National Grid. May I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All right. Okay. So this is work on Summer Street down by Beach Street. National Grid, who is, who do we have for National Grid?
Hey, Eli, it's Matt.
Hi.
A lot larger with Lidos as well.
Okay. Want to give a brief explanation of what the project is?
Sure. So for this, we need to install one manhole, and it's going to be roughly 330 feet or so of conduits on Summer Street towards Beach Street. We have a substation over there, and we're going to be reconductoring our feeders in the area. It's part of our Continued Manchester by the Sea Reliability and Area Improvement Plan. This is just one part of it, but for this, for this part, it's going to be installing a manhole in between two existing manholes and installing that, that new conduit system, the new duct bank there.
Okay. Well, I'm all in favor of continuing to improve our reliability, obviously. I know that the, one, one comment we have from the DPW is that particular stretch of road is very heavily trafficked. There was, there were two requests there. One was that the work began after Columbus Day and that we consider doing it as night work because of the amount of traffic that goes through there. Is National Grid okay with those two constraints?
So just to be clear, that would be starting after Columbus Day, and you would prefer if it was night work?
Yep.
I think that the, Lyle, do you have any feedback on that?
I think that, yeah, that should be, given the, the expectations, at least on my end, in completing design deliverables, that's, that's, as long as it's all right with you, Matt.
As far as it being night work, it's not necessarily a decision that I can make. That would, that would be coming from an underground manager as far as how they would be able to schedule the, the work to be able to do that. I believe our civil crews would be able to work at night to install the manhole and so forth. Lyle, would, this would just be for the, for the civil portion? I guess it wouldn't necessarily involve our underground quite yet until cable pulling.
Correct. Yes.
All right, then I would have, then I would have to imagine, so I, I think that would be all right. I can talk with the, with the civil contractor. Were we using Caruso McGovern for that? Wow.
I'm sorry, say that again.
The civil contractor to install the manhole and the conduit system. Is it going to be Caruso McGovern?
That's what I've been hearing, yes.
Okay. That is something I can confirm with them, but I do believe that that would be all right.
Yes.
May I ask two questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
One is, how long is this anticipated to take? And I did notice that DPW wanted to know how many conduits and if they are concrete and casing.
There are eight five-inch conduits. And they will be carrying primary. So yes, they will be concrete encased.
And how long do you anticipate the work to take?
I'm not even sure. I, I would just purely be guessing.
I'm just asking in terms of a timeframe for, you know, after Columbus Day and night work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
How's the board members?
Yeah, I have a question. So this road will be passable, except of course, when you're working on it at night. Otherwise, every day it will be passable. Is that correct?
Yes, and yes, they would, they would do their very best to make sure that
Yeah, yeah.
passable during daytime.
Metal plates or whatever. Yeah, there's no, no detour that's involved.
No, no, not that I would be, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Oh, one other question was, will this be restricted to the roadway or will any sidewalks be involved?
Strictly within the pavement or the curb to curb, so all within the paved roadway.
Thank you.
What about passability during construction itself? And that's a major, that's a major thoroughfare for, for our little burg. It's, it has an impact on businesses downstream going towards the beach. And, and businesses along Summer Street.
Correct. So Matt, I guess it would depend on how the contractor actually lays out their movement of traffic plan and how they sort of phase it out. I can't speak to how particularly they would approach that. But we do recognize it's a, as you mentioned, a highly trafficked area. So very important to, to keep it as open as possible.
It, it also depends on what we mean by night work. I mean, I, I hate to push contractors to have to go really late, but things really quiet down later on. Certainly, if the businesses are closed.
You have hours that you defined? Yet?
No, I, I have no hours. This is a conversation that I'm going to have to have with our civil contractor. The, the night work aspect of it was not something that was brought to my attention. So as far as it being night work, I don't foresee them having a problem doing it as night work. But for timeframes and passability on the road during and after, I don't have much of answers for you.
So, so here's, it feels to me like we have a few unknowns here that we would like to get sorted out. Tighter information on the timeframes and to be sure that the contractor is comfortable with the commitments that we're asking for. And to get a little bit more information about the duration of the project. And perhaps a little bit more clarity on how traffic flow would be impacted during the work period, even though it might be at night. Just, just because of the high impact and tight nature of the, the area that you're going to be working in. And I, I wonder if it would be appropriate for us to continue this hearing to our next meeting and give you a little bit of time to go and collect that information and, and make sure that we're not approving something that you guys are going to have issues with or are going to want, want to make changes to. It might just be better for you to have a chance to talk to the contractors and then come back to us. Does that, does that sound reasonable to you?
Yes, I agree with you, Eli. I think it would be beneficial if I could get the answers from the contractor so that all of us are clear all the way around.
Okay.
Just for me to be able to ask these questions. So it's going to, you guys would like to know the timeframe, if they can start after Columbus Day. And passability of the road during the day and in the evening.
Yeah. And then get some commitment or get some time windows when contractors, what the definition of night work actually would be. Seven o'clock, eight o'clock, nine, whatever.
Okay.
And so, so I will make a motion to continue before the hearing. But before I do that, are there any comments from the public? This is a public hearing. Anybody there has an axe to grind on this is free to make comments. So if you do want to make a comment, unmute yourself, identify yourself and ask to be recognized. All right, there'll be an opportunity to make additional comments in the public at the next time, when we take this hearing up again. So I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing to our next meeting on October 5th.
Yep. Yes.
At, we have to have a specific time, correct, Greg?
Yes.
So actually, should we say 6:30 now? I'll preface this by saying, yeah, I'm actually not going to be at that meeting. So Jeff, it's all yours. So let you select the time then.
Okay, 6:30.
6:30. 6:30.
We'll take it right off the start so that they don't have to wait around and get on to.
All right. So that's my motion is to continue the public hearing until 6:30 PM on October 5th. Any discussion? Board members, roll call vote, Mr. Bob Marterner?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes, yes. Okay. Thanks, everybody. And we will see you for, well, I won't see you, but there's the other board members to see you on October 5th.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Look forward to it.
Okay. We're going to move on to some committee interviews for, no, one, two, three, yeah, four committee interviews. We're going to do the interviews for these folks. They're not going to make decisions on these positions. This meeting will make the decisions at a subsequent meeting. And the four that we're going to be taking tonight are Leslie Beatty, and then you can correct me on the pronunciation of your name as well. For the Welcome to Manchester Committee, Emma Benali Dip for the Dip, Allison Sellers for Conservation Commission, and Lee Scharf for Sustainability. And I am going to take Lee Scharf first because, well, we've been hoping to speak to her for some time now, and I see that she's still here. And I'm for sure going to make sure we get it, get it done this time. So Lee, you unmuted yourself. If you could go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your, your interests here. We'd appreciate it.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lee Scharf. I am, have been a resident of Manchester for over 30 years. I have no expertise in sustainability, but I recently completed a research project on the climate change attitudes of the residents of Manchester by the Sea. So I have some in-depth knowledge as to how the town is thinking and acting in, in regards to sustainability issues and specifically climate change. So I'd love to join this committee. And if anyone has any questions, welcome.
Okay, so I guess I'll go ahead and move things along quickly and say, Jeff, you're first.
Great. Lee, I, this is, I think, the third time that you've been scheduled to come up to bat. And the question that comes to mind is, what about your availability for Sustainability Committee meetings and work outside the committee?
I just recently started a graduate program and I I, my classes happen to meet on Mondays and Tuesday evenings. I have spoken to the committee about that. I have plenty of free time outside of those two evenings. They usually meet on Thursday nights, so I, I think we're okay.
Thank you.
Becky?
I know, Lee. I think she'd be great. I have no questions.
John Round?
Yes, Lee. And Lee, thanks for raising your hand on this. We love hands that get raised.
Yes.
A lot of times there aren't enough, but that's, that's great. So it's, it's good to hear that you did some sort of a survey, I guess, of interest, the level of interest in the town for sustainability. And you seem to have a very, you know, seem to have a strong interest in this. Were there, were there other pursuits that you'd done in this particular area? Or I know it's not in your professional background, but.
Just in my own personal life.
Okay.
And I have some adult children who have been very involved in this, so I, I have some background knowledge of all of this.
Built-in survey there.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anne Harrison?
I can only echo Becky's comments. I know Lee, I think she'll do a great job.
Thank you, Anne.
Okay. Okay. So, Lee, do you compose?
Yes, I do.
I think that's actually going to be my only question.
I do more than that, actually.
That's, that's okay. I'm going to stick with that, that one. We can qualify our questions. Okay. All right. Thanks very much for coming. It's nice to finally have you here and able to speak before us.
Thank you. It's nice to finally be able to be here.
Okay. Let's move on then. We'll go to Allison Sellers for the Conservation Commission. And I will say that we have another applicant also interested in CONCON. That person is not going to be able to interview until October 5th. So our, our decision here may drift out a little bit, but let's, let's do our interview here. So Allison, if you could unmute yourself and introduce yourself and tell us about your interest in Conservation Commission, we appreciate it.
Sure. So my name's Allison Sellers, and I have lived in Manchester for seven years. And actually, And actually, we recently bought in Manchester, and so, very exciting. And so I am eager to get involved, and Henry Ottinger, who is on the Conservation Commission, reached out because he knows my personal interest in conservation and protecting the environment. And so he encouraged me to apply, and so to give you a little background of what interests me in environmental protection. So actually, growing up, my mom was a, I grew up down south, and so there are different organizations and entities that do this sort of work. And so she was a supervisor for the Soil and Water Commission in the town that we grew up in. And so I spent my childhood going after school and like measuring trees and documenting them. And she actually ended up founding a nonprofit in our town also around protecting trees, and cleaning was a part of it. So we would like take oranges and pecans from trees and give them to people in need. So this has been something that I've spent my life, you know, in my personal life, really working toward the advocacy and protection of the environment. And so I'm eager to give back locally for something that I see as, you know, helping out the larger community and world. And so in that way, I feel like it's really meaningful work that you could do locally.
Okay, so board members, Jeff?
I have no questions. She sounds perfect for the position.
Becky.
That's wonderful. Love the enthusiasm. Just question about time. If you, you know, if you have any other obligations that might impact your time availability.
Sure, so I met with Chris Bertoni about a week or two ago to talk about the time commitment, given that this would require learning a lot around the regulations and what that would look like. And she mentioned, you know, meeting every three weeks and then on occasion, meeting onsite and all of that. And so based off of everything that she shared, I definitely have enough time for it. I work at Brookwood, so I'm local and I have school hours, and so I would have no problem with the time commitment.
Wonderful. Thank you, and thank you again for the enthusiasm. It's wonderful.
Yeah.
Anne Harrison.
Um, again, thank you for the enthusiasm. It's a lot of work, and not everybody is going to appreciate your efforts, but good luck.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm good. I like the excitement that you're, that you're kind of giving off here, Allison. I think you'd be a good fit, and yes, it does take a lot of work, but it sounds like you're happy to dive in. Thank you.
Okay, so Allison, you may have partly answered my questions. You spent some time talking to Chris Bertoni about the time commitments and a little bit of the work that's done. Are you familiar with the types of hearings and the nature of how those hearings are managed in the state of Massachusetts?
So, I mean, a surface level, I think. So it's not only in regard to public land around wetlands, but also private land and the hearings around the construction around water. And so she described, you know, she gave me a whole bunch of different scenarios of the different sort of hearings that would come to the committee. And so she mentioned what the kids that I work with call Stinky Beach. I'm not sure what the name is. But the beach on Harbor Ave, like around Bytuck Point, she said that there is construction to rebuild that wall and how that's what the Conservation Commission is looking at right now. But then, in a given month, you might also end up at a person's home surveying a particular area where they went to build close to water. And so I, that's my understanding, is that it's really a broad look at protecting both open spaces and waterways and how it plays in with state and federal regulations. Is that right?
Yep. So the point being is that it is a quasi judicial position, and decisions you make end up being, you know, binding in some respect on residents as opposed to advisory in nature to the board, slightly different. Wanted to make sure you were aware of that and understood that.
Yes, I was aware of that, and in a way, I actually took solace in that there are, you know, black and white regulations that would be enforced versus the sort of when a group comes together, like my neighbor is on the Historic Commission, and she shares some of the stories around that. And I feel like that could be subjective and could require multiple conversations where this is enforcing a regulation. And so in that way, I feel confident in being able to have conversations and make decisions around that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, thanks very much for coming in and also for your enthusiasm. That's very much appreciated. And like I said, we'll be making the decision at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Allison.
All right.
All right, let's move on to Emma Benali, and you can correct my pronunciation. This is for the Downtown Improvement Project Committee. Emma, are you there? Could you unmute yourself?
Not sure if we have, and we never got confirmation.
Ah, all right, well, she can come in or they can come in at a different point in time and correct my butchering of their name. Leslie Beatty.
It's actually pronounced like Warren Beatty, but no relation, unfortunately.
Okay. All right, go ahead, introduce yourself and tell us your interest in the Welcome to Manchester Committee.
So similar to Allison, where she is somewhat of a newcomer to Manchester. I've been here with my husband full conscience for five years, but I did have a head start. We started coming in the summer seven years before that. But it took me a while to just kind of find my footing, let's say. And as a librarian back in Dallas, I drifted naturally to the library here and got my feet wet just by getting to know the librarians and some of the patrons and things like that. And so it would be, so it would be nice to actually have a connection with the newcomers to the town that maybe wouldn't take quite so long as it did for me to find opportunities, find places to volunteer, find groups and that 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 I would be interested in joining. I've done all that at this point, not all of it, of course, but I could see that, you know, we probably need help in introducing new families to Manchester and with, and maybe even producing some sort of brochure to give to them that has different ideas of where to turn to for questions and for, like I said, resources and volunteer places and groups and things like that.
Okay. Well, let's go with Jeff again.
Full position. You know, your experience echoes other people who have who have applied for the position on welcoming committee, the positions, because there are several open that you, you found your way, but it would have been better to have a little bit of support in doing that. And I think that's a really important qualification, that you have this experience that you would like to help other people improve upon. So my, my only question would be about availability.
Honestly, I have not checked. I believe that Beth Whelan is also in this committee. So we'd be working together, and we already work together at the Manchester Historical Museum, so it'd be easy to coordinate. But due to the fact that there were various openings on this welcoming committee, I wasn't at all sure whether it was already going or whether they were waiting for enough people to make it happen.
I think the issue there is that it has been going in the past and has been depleted of members and is less involved with newcomers. So it's a building, stocking up again.
Got it, and I'd be happy to take that on.
Thank you.
Becky.
Leslie, thank you. It's, as Jeff said, you are saying some things that we've also heard recently from others. And with that, you would bring a very good perspective, what needs addressing and how best to address that for the newcomers to town. Jeff asked the question I would have. I would just like to say thank you very much for putting your hat in the ring and also for being over at the Historical Museum.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
Anne Harrison.
Um, can you give me, you found your way into town through the library. What other paths would you suggest for people?
If a family has schoolchildren, it'd be fun to introduce a family to another who has children the same age, but also the garden club, some of the other groups that work directly with the town in terms of, oh gosh, you know, the volunteer groups made up of of people that raise money for scholarships. Also for stores and volunteer opportunities and things like that, kind of all over town, that sometimes need to be unveiled, let's put it that way.
Thank you. Thank you for offering.
John Round.
Yes, thank you, and hello, Leslie.
Hi, John.
Good, good. Leslie and I both serve on, as board members on the Historic Museum. And yeah, I read the little blurb on your background, which I think is quite ideal for this. Others here have spoken about some of the other people that we've heard from with regard to this this committee and coming into town and not knowing where to turn. And as a librarian, you know, your resource capital R. And that's what a lot of these people need. They come across and they say, I didn't know about this. I didn't know that this is the way this was done. How do you do that? These are all little pieces of information that, you know, make a person feel more comfortable when they first move into town. And I know that you'll probably go to work on really compiling, here are all of the things you need to know to get comfortable in Manchester. So it's a skill set that would be very, very welcome to that committee. So thank you.
Okay. So Leslie, my questions actually have already been answered by the previous questions from board members. So I am all set. I don't have any other further questions for you. Thank you for throwing your hat in the ring. Like I said, we will be making actual decisions at a subsequent meeting.
Great. Well, please say hello to Penny for me. We met at the library.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda. Agenda item number five, outdoor dining enclosed tents and heaters also for the Maori. Greg, do you want to hit the details on this one?
So the Maori has put in a request to put up a tent, a 10 by 20 tent over their outdoor dining area that's, you know, right up in front of their establishment. Subsequent to their submittal, we understand that the state has revised their guidelines, and they are allowing up to four sides to be placed, all four sides of the tent to be attached if a business so chooses. So that is a change from when we had last talked about tents. In this case, we'll need to make sure if the Maori would like to have all four sides up, we'll need to make sure though that the sidewalk still is open for pedestrians so that at least a three-foot plus area is maintained. So that'll be important. So fairly straightforward at this point. They have not proposed any heating for the tent. I did notice that they did have heaters out by the tables on my way home this afternoon. And so those heaters, I would not qualify as appropriate for an enclosed space. So we just need to hear from, hear from the folks at the Maori, if they plan to provide heat. If so, that heating system will need to be approved by the fire chief.
Questions from board members. Oh, by the way, do we have somebody from the Maori here today?
All right.
I was thinking maybe the one, the manager was such an individual, but apparently not. All right, questions from board members.
Eli, I do have, I have a couple of questions. And one pertains to the pedestrian walkway. If they, I'm not sure which sides they're proposing putting up on their tent. But if they put a side up that is on the opposite side of Manchester by the book, where, how are pedestrians to get through? I see people could perhaps walk around the lamppost, but I don't think a wheelchair could get around that lamppost. That's one of my questions. And the other is, has the Board of Health weighed in on this?
So we don't have, you know, they haven't reviewed it as a full board. They did provide the comments about the side being allowed now. That was part of a call they had with the state on Friday. And we're supposed to be getting written materials from the state sometime this week about that. But I think you're right, Becky, that that's the pinch point on the sidewalk.
Right.
On that western edge there by the lamppost. And if a side is going to be put there, I think it'll have to be pulled back a bit to enable appropriate.
So are we expecting something more than the than the memo that was included in our packet from the Board of Health?
Yes, we will. Again, we'll be getting the written new guideline, the updated guideline from the state. And they'll also provide some comments similar to what they did on the for tents. So yes, they would be providing some additional input.
Okay, we don't have any idea of how high this tent is. And and also how the the curb meets ADA, going over the curb and into the eating area meets ADA. the curb meets ADA, going over the curb and into the eating area meets ADA.
Does it need to?
That was an issue that we raised in the very beginning of all this. And I'm thinking about Callas is overlapping the curb as well.
I thought the ADA requirement was for people to pass on the sidewalk, not necessarily have ADA access into the dining area, if I'm mistaken.
You're, if you're asking me that question, I'm not sure of the answer. Although I know that there has to be ADA accessibility within a restaurant. I'm not sure what the specific regulations are.
So now that the, so initially the outdoor dining was prior to indoor, any indoor option. Now that there is indoor seating, the ADA accommodations can be met through the indoor seating. And so there's not a specific requirement
Okay.
that the outdoor dining has to be preferred, that at least one seat on one table is ADA outdoor, just to have equity there. But it's not, it's not a mandate.
Okay. Then the final issue that I have is whether we have a written assent to this from Manchester by the book. This, when I add up the footing and I look at the actual site, it seems to me that that 20 feet is going to substantially block the window at Manchester by the book. So the question is whether he's been notified about this change and whether he's okay with it. We did this with Callas with the Stock Exchange. And my concern is how it impacts Manchester by the book. So just, you know, a friendly letter from them would be perfect. As we had requested of Callas with Stock Exchange.
Yeah. Other board members?
I agree with Jeff on that. We did not hear from Manchester by the book when the spaces were first set up for the Maori, I don't think. Maybe there was some dialogue between them. I would think that would be probably a bigger issue than with the tent. In other words, I think the tent's probably okay because if there were concerns, that probably would have come up when the spaces were were taken by Manchester by the book back two months ago. But we do, we should hear from them. You're right.
Oh, we have a comment from Chief Cleary. Jason, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Just one item about the tent. If they are putting up four sides at any point, then it does become an enclosed structure. And then it has to have certain egress requirements met. And also the possibility of needing fire extinguishers and exit lighting, depending upon the side. But egress paths and tent openings have to be evaluated if they do go with four sides.
Have we heard any indication from them about since the state changes requirements on two sides versus four sides? Have we heard any input from the Maori about whether or not they were going to be doing or wanting to do two versus four sides?
I don't believe we have, no.
Other board members?
I have a concern about the height and the extent to which that tent will block the sightlines around the intersection between Union and Beach. People coming up and turning. It'd be nice to see some of the materials that Callas has presented us with.
So a bit of a simulation of the view?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Also, were they planning on using solid or transparent sides?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Also, do we know how they would be securing the tent? Will there be poles outside of the barriers? I mean, it's, I know there's one outside a barrier at Callas, but this part of the road is already, seems a little tight.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure the poles were all inside the barriers. It was a 10 foot wide pole tent that they proposed. So it was, it was not extending over the barrier.
Thank you.
All right. So it sounds like there's still a few questions that need to be answered by the Maori. I'd love to be able to give some sort of conditional approval. But I think that's going to be kind of hard to do since we can't talk to them here tonight. And I think the nature of the questions, there's too many of them open to be able to do a conditional approval tonight. What do the other board members think?
I would agree with that. You know, I'd hope that they would show up at this meeting so that we could ask them the questions directly.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Sure.
So we can watch the weather. And if it, it's not going to be particularly cold for the next week or so. And if it's going to snap really cold, then we could consider injecting a short meeting to discuss any requests from them if they got older ducks in a row. But in the meantime, we can work with them to get a a more detailed proposal and touch on some of the points the fire chief raised. And see whether or not they're planning on doing two versus four sides. Still not sure how I feel. Does, Greg, do we know why, what drove the state to shift to four sides being okay versus two sides?
So basically, the state logic was, well, we've allowed interior seating as long as the tables are, you know, spaced appropriately. And so they didn't feel that it would be any different now having tents being basically enclosed as well, as long as certain minimums were met. That's my understanding of sort of the logic that the state was using. And they were realizing, you know, that things are lasting longer. And they were trying to help out the restaurant businesses as much as possible, understanding that, you know, they can't have full capacity inside.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't know to what extent we have more conservative in our authorizations than the state guidance on this. From my perspective, so if we went with the state's guidance of four sides being closed as legitimate, then basically it just creates another interior space with all the same interior space has, it just, they have more of it so they can spread people out a little bit more. However, the tents that we have on the outside do not have people really significantly spread out. The reason why they're really, there is separation, but it's still pretty dense compared to what we would want on an inside restaurant. So for example, if, if, I want to be careful, this is me personally saying this now. If you were to take, for example, this basic Callas and wrap that in four walls, I wouldn't set foot in there. This is me personally. With it open, there's a massive amount of airflow and ventilation. To me, it's a different proposition. It changes the tenor of what I was, what I thought for the good of the town is what we were trying to achieve. Namely, a space that people would be more comfortable and safer. Because if all we're doing is creating an interior, essentially the equivalent of an interior space, then what? I mean, we should just remove the sidewalk dining and say, go ahead and go inside. I don't see, I'm going to have to think about that a little bit. I don't, I don't quite know how to process this just yet.
I think part of the problem, Eli, is that the state has not put out clear regulations on what came up in the, on the phone on Friday. So we don't know what the regulations are.
Yeah, that's true.
Eli, I think additionally, you know, my indoor dining, they have at least some form of a ventilation system. Outdoors, if you're, if you're putting up sides, what do you have? You don't have ventilation.
So I should be clear, no one has asked for four sides at this point.
Right.
So we'll have to wait, but you're good to anticipate.
Right.
The issue, but at this point, we don't have someone asking for that.
Then if we made an approval on a tent with two sides, then it would be incumbent on the applicant to then come back to us and ask for four sides.
Yes.
Close, four sides regardless of what the state guidance changes are.
Still, that's correct. That's correct. So you've approved only two sides for Callas, for example.
Yeah.
Can we make a request, not a request, but a provision in this that the, that the end wall facing traffic, I assume coming into town, is clear. I think Ann's point and Becky's point about the traffic coming through there. Most of the dining that's going to go on now in the evening is going to be at dusk or dark. So lights will show of people coming around the corner in the opposite direction. But I think that we need to say that because of the location of this, that we need a clear wall on one end.
What does a clear wall on one end give you?
It gives you an opportunity to see lights coming up in the opposite direction. Well, it increases the lines of sight as opposed to a solid wall.
This is the drivers. This is the drivers you're talking about.
Yeah, the drivers.
Obviously.
Okay, so the clear wall faces a blank wall. You can probably see the lights through it anyway.
The clear wall, I'm talking about on the ends.
Yep.
In the line of traffic, where the traffic's coming in.
I think we probably want both of those, both ends to be clear.
Yeah, I mean, we could go that direction. But I definitely think at least one end.
I think we should see what they're proposing.
Thank you.
But I don't want them to have to come back a third time.
Yes.
True, true. All right.
But I think Greg, at this point, understands enough about what our concerns are to not come back with something that's going to generate a lot more questions.
Right. Eli, did you see the chief's comment?
Oh.
Yeah.
Good.
Wow.
Not good.
All right. Okay, thanks, chief. You know, it is going to be an ongoing challenge for everybody. All right. So I think we can move on from this agenda item now. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to agenda item six, COVID update in a fall beach use. So the Parks and Rec is staffing the beach into the beginning of October. And what's going to be happening after that is, well, October 15th, the dogs are allowed back on the beach. We have in place right now a policy which says the parking lot is open to residents only. And the question that's going to come up as things get colder, it's going to happen soon. And we start getting more dog walkers and people are transitioning to just walking on the beach as opposed to dwelling on the beach. Is, is there a need for us to change our policy with respect to opening the parking lot to non-residents? We won't be able to control the beach from a practical standpoint after the Parks and Rec staff closed down for the season. But we do have control over the parking lot still. So this is an opportunity for the board to begin that discussion. I use the word opportunity to, well, I don't know quite how I use it. Anyway, Greg, did you have any more detail you wanted to throw around this?
Not really. I think it sums it up pretty well. It's certainly keeping staff there, staff presence, you know, beyond the end of the month is, does not seem practical. And the amount of traffic, I don't think would demand that. Obviously, beach use is much different in the off season as it gets colder. People are there for much shorter periods of time, a lot of coming and going. So it's, you know, from a staff perspective, it did not seem like a worthwhile endeavor to try to staff and have a presence there and to monitor.
Comments from the board?
Having, having a regulation or rule against out of containers in the parking lot and not doing anything about it makes me very uncomfortable. So either we send somebody around and ticket the cars periodically or we just say, okay, fine, not residents only for the winter.
Yeah. Other board members?
Well, what has the, what has the policy been in past years? In the winter?
It's been open.
It's been open. Anybody can go.
Correct.
Okay.
Isn't there a limitation of people who are non-residents parking alongside Beach Street?
Not enforced, for sure.
It's not heavily enforced. In theory, it's, you know, the two hour limit.
So there's a two hour limit inside the parking lot for non-residents in that 10 car area?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, you're talking about at the parking lot?
I'm talking about inside the parking lot. There's a rest, there's a non-resident area, which I don't believe that we use during the summertime because it's residents only during the summertime to come into the parking lot.
Correct. And we don't, we haven't traditionally enforced that in the off season. So it's, non-residents typically are able to park anywhere in the parking lot.
Okay, there's a rabbit hole that we could dive down into here that I'm not sure that I want to go into. Okay. I, there's a, there's a rabbit hole that we could dive down into here that I'm not sure that I want to go into. And that, that rabbit hole is, um, dog walkers bringing large amounts of dogs that are non-res, people who are non-residents have a business and they bring large amounts of dogs to the beach during the, uh, during the dog season.
We have a, a bylaw wrapped around that, I believe. I thought we did put in place, uh, constraints on the number of, um, dogs that one, uh, in, in individual can bring in.
Yeah, my memory is it's, it's, yeah, uh, two, you're allowed to have two dogs with you. Again, enforcement is not, um, not high.
Eli?
Yeah.
Sorry, I disappeared there for a minute. Am I interrupting anybody?
Go ahead.
I, I just, I guess my concern regarding the beach is that, um, fact that the schools are not in, they're, they're meeting virtually. And many people are still working from home. I, I think that it would be, um, responsible to maintain the beach for the use of the residents. As opposed to opening it up more for more, for wider use. That's, uh, that's how I feel at this point. We can actually have, you know, we can perhaps get Chief Fitzgerald to, to weigh in on, you know, keeping an eye on things down there.
With respect to the parking, you mean?
Yes.
Cause I don't think anybody's proposing that the people are actually police the, um, people on the.
No, 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 just the parking. Um, and I'm not, I'm also not implying that it's not being done at this point. I'm, I'm just saying that if we keep, if, if, if we're going to say it needs to remain residents only, then we need to ins, well, work to ensure that.
You need to ticket people?
Yes.
Well, um, I mean, I, I think obviously we can s- set that as a policy. Typically of, um, we've wanted the police to ticket and I think they do to.
Yep.
Some people would prefer maybe to be more, um, uh, draconian with that. I think the real question is whether or not we as a board, setting aside the issue of enforcement, whether or not that actually, if we presume that we're doing enforcement to enforce policy, from a policy standpoint, is there a point at which the board would feel comfortable making the, um, parking lot available to non-residents? And if so, what point is then? Sounds like there's some reticence to do so currently. But, uh, does the board think that that should be revisited in November, December, January, when it drops below 12 degrees, four degrees? I'd like a little bit of guidance from the board.
I, I'm not, I'm not adverse to opening it on October 15th to non-residents.
Yeah, we certainly revisit in, in at least a month of, I mean, if not less, but.
And then we, and then we, and then we can take a look at whether it's being abused and there's too many people on the beach.
I don't agree with that. I, I feel more comfortable leaving it as it is for now and revisiting in another month.
But what's the load on the beach right now? It's not, you know, I haven't been down there in a
There's nobody down.
Couple of weeks. That's, that, that would be my impression, but who's going to the beach when it's, it's pretty cool.
Dogs are not allowed on yet.
Right. We know. And that'll change the, that'll change the scenario on, on October 15th.
Right.
I'd be in favor of, of, of certainly looking back at it in the last part of October and seeing where we are. I don't know how that's going to change with residents when dog season opens.
When you say looking back on it, on, do you mean, uh, approving?
Yes. In other words, not, not approving it now, but I, you know, we don't know what's going to happen on October 15th and I don't have a dog. So it's not like I've had experience and what happens when, uh, when, when dog season opens. I'm sure.
What's the metric for the decision?
Yeah.
Right. I don't think, I mean, I'm not debating dogs on the beach or not. I'm just debating who has access to it more readily right now. And I think that it should be the, the members of the town and perhaps the school age kids who are learning remotely and definitely need a good place to be outside.
My, my thinking is that, as Becky said, there are a lot of people home. I don't know how the parking lot changes when dog season comes and people start to walk their dogs. But if there are more people working at home, there are more people that are going to go down to the beach to walk their dog for a half an hour.
Usually what happens?
And, and I don't, I don't, you know, none of us knows how that's going to evolve, but we'll know in the third week of October.
I'd like to just throw into the mix of this that, um, our town, our downtown businesses have requested all summer long that we open up the beach. And, um, and years ago, I ran a business in, in Rockport and, um, the day after Labor Day, it was like, forget it. There were 13,000 people a weekend before that. And after Labor Day, there were just residents. It, it's a big hit that the summer season is ending or has ended, um, will officially end tomorrow at 9:30 a.m. But I think it's a better proposition to businesses to open the beach to non-resident dog walkers who may use some of our businesses and, and, uh, and patronize them. I don't think that we're going to be, you know, doing anything out of line with where we've been going all summer.
Jeff, where are the dog walkers going to put the dogs when they go shopping?
In the car. The place that they always do, in the car.
I, I just, I think we're getting a little, well, I, nevermind. I, I understand what you're saying and I, yes, I think it's important that we try to help the businesses. I think that's, that's a little, little different. I think we still have Mascanomo open for parking and all the street parking that's open as well. So I don't, I don't.
We don't have non-residents coming into town, um, for other activities like going to the beach. So.
Do you think non-residents are going to go park at the beach and then walk from the beach up to town?
No, I think it's an impulse purchase. They're, they're on the way back from the beach, the dogs are in the car and they say, I'm going to stop in and buy something.
That's right.
That's all. Nobody, nobody's walking in except on the beach.
But non-residents who don't have dogs may also walk on the beach. It's not just dogs that go to the beach.
That's true.
And the beach is beautiful and, um, and we've constrained it all summer long because of clear concerns about COVID. But I think that those concerns have shifted.
And the fall, um, the, the nature of the use changes in the fall. It's not people, interacting with each other and, and sitting in large groups for long periods of time and then crowding significantly in the town. If you look at our beach usage during the winter months, you, in the colder months, you really don't see massive crowding of the town due to it. Now, um, I will say that in October, we sometimes do have very warm, um, times. And every once in a while, you'll generate, um, a significant number of people coming to the beach as a result. That is possible. Uh, but I, I, I do, I do wonder, um, I, I don't, it's hard for me to see the metric that, that says we should not increase the access as things get colder. And we know that naturally the, the number of people using it and the nature of their use is going to shift. I don't quite see, um, keeping such tight grips in there.
Greg, have you had merchants inquire about when the rules are going to change over the last couple of weeks?
No, not the last couple of weeks, John.
Okay.
They certainly, they certainly were asking in August.
I, I asked. Okay. Oh, when they were asking in August, they were saying, hey, summer's coming to an end. You're going to open the ball, you know, open everything up.
They were hoping for earlier, but at, at a minimum of that, yes.
Okay.
All right. Um, so here's the thing. This is, um, September 21st, we have a meeting on October 5th, at which I won't be there. And then another meeting, um, on the, uh, what, 19th? So if we're going to change policy here, we do it at one of those, uh, if we, if we're going to change policy, we do it at one of those meetings. If, if we want to, uh, consider having, uh, access, opening up access to the beach a little bit more. If you folks want to have that discussion on the 5th, you know, uh, I'm okay with that, but I won't be there almost certainly. So, uh, part of me is thinking that we should have a, a, a vote tonight on it, um, see where it lands. And we just update ourselves, uh, uh, on the 19th or, uh, as appropriate. So if we had a vote tonight, regarding, um, parking access, the parking lot, and we didn't approve it, we might, um, regardless of the metric with that, we might revisit it again in, um, November, or later October. Board members care to vote on this tonight, or do you want to go to the 5th or the 19th?
I'd like to vote on it tonight and I move that on the 15th, we remove the resident only restriction on the parking lot at the beach.
Second. Oh, uh, there's a comment from, Mike in the chat, significantly easier to delay the decision than it will be to change it back later on. Yes, that's true. But, uh, I think we're choosing not to delay the decision right now. And Todd Fitzgerald said, just to let everyone know, we have the beach staff where they're committing through Columbus Day. Parking enforcement patrols make random checks and enforcement during the week. So that's just an FYI.
Did you see, I'm sorry, did you see the chief's comment? Uh, Chief Claris?
Recommend in the short term, that given the current drought conditions, we continue to prevent fires on the beach and not issue any permits. That's fine. That's, that's, uh, orthogonal to this particular discussion. The only discussion, so what we have right now is a motion to effective October 15th, remove the restriction of non-resident parking, um, at the beach. And it's been seconded. So discussion. All right. Roll call vote. Mr. Bob and Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ann?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
No.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes, yes. All right. So we're going to try it out and, um, if we, um, regret it, we will revisit it on the 19th and every, you know, week after that. Keeping a week, week, a watchful eye. And if other circumstances, um, change in the state with respect or locally with respect to our COVID numbers, we can also revisit it and will as needed. Okay. Moving on to liaison project updates. Item number seven on the agenda. So I have no update, um, from my end this, uh, this time around. Jeff, open spaces and other items?
Okay. Uh, the Open Space and Recreation Committee Advisory Group is meeting, um, tomorrow at three o'clock. And, um, I'll have more information about where the group is heading, um, at our October 5th meeting. They've closed the survey that was open to the town after the, uh, public, public forum in August. Um, and we should be looking at the data for that survey.
Okay. Any questions from board members on that? All right, Anne, on, uh, tell them, tell them the, the tele-meeting support.
Not much. There was a, a link to the meeting today, but there wasn't a link to the, um, password. And with any luck, next time, we won't all have to go someplace else and find the password.
Yep.
Yes. Do it though.
So actually, um, on that point, a while back, so, so I don't want to diverge too much on this, but a while back, we, Anne, you'd made a comment about the town website and the, uh, business of when you look at the, uh, scheduled meeting items in the town website, in order to get to the documents of interest like the agenda, you have to click through like three different things to get to them. It's difficult. And I actually, we actually, I don't know if others got this too, but I got a letter, um, uh, late last week from a resident, um, commenting on exactly this and a few other issues about the website. It's, is this something that we can address? I, I would like to see a calendar and a meeting calendar, which is making things much more accessible. So you didn't have to, know where to click in order to get the agenda, the other information related to the meeting. I find it frustrating and I think that our residents are not well-served by it.
Sure. Let me, let me work with Tiffany on that. See what we can do.
I think, I think that we've, we've already got it. We just need to get a link to the agenda that when you go into the calendar and you click on today and you click on Board of Selectment, um, it tells you when the meeting is.
How to get to it.
It tells you how to get to Zoom and that we need a password in there. But we can also have a link to the agenda.
That, John and I have not quite well-defined areas. I thought John was working mostly on the website and I was trying to figure out how not to drive Eli to pull out all of his hair, um, on the, um, yeah, Zoom on meetings.
Yeah. Um, I, I checked with Tiffany on a, a couple of occasions on, on. I, I checked with Tiffany on a couple of occasions on, on this, back, I guess, in July or so, but it seems to me that this kind of falls into that category, and, you know, Greg, you're going to work with Tiffany, or, and I, and I can join that discussion.
Yeah, I mean, on this particular issue, it sounds like a, I don't think it would be that hard to make sure we have the
No, no.
And there's a direct link to the agenda. So, let me, let me work with her on that.
I think we all got that note, and there were two or three points that this resident made.
It might be an idea to try and get him just to send a list of things that are wrong, because it's, it's really hard and tedious to go through a marginally structured website and find all of the redundant references that have to be updated. But if somebody were actually looking and saying, oh, yeah, it's easy to fix, it's just tedious to find.
I, I am trying to get each department to, to take some responsibility here and make sure that they are monitoring their pages on a minimum of a weekly basis, to make sure things are staying current. So we will, we will continue to drive that.
Okay. All right, let's move on. Becky, on the Planning Board, the 40R, et cetera.
Yes, Planning Board met September 14th. Ron Mastropiakamo will remain Chair. Mary Foley will remain the clerk. They appointed or, or had the members of the Planning Board volunteer various liaison positions. There was a discussion with Peter Gordo and Mark Globski, resulted, result regarding the bylaws of the 40R area or limited commercial district. So they're going to, they being Planning Board, will create a study group regarding various aspects, height limits, allowed uses, setbacks, et cetera. Let's see what else. And that was really the bulk of it. They do have a 40R Smart Growth Overlay District Working Group meeting coming up, which is going to be the 24th of this month, and the link to that, if anybody's interested, is on the town website. Then the Planning Board met the next night for recodification, and they tightened up some wording, adding general definition for the ADUs, little work on affordable housing and affordability requirements, and just tightening up the wording for various aspects of the bylaws and the general bylaws. And there you have it.
Okay, so, um.
Becky, could I add a, a comment?
You.
Actually, Gary, could you just, so I, um, I know that the Planning Board has put the ADU proposal back into the mix for discussion. And touched on the timeframes involved, because I know there's been some, perhaps a misconception about what is act, what the actual process is. It is, the, the way this recodification process is going to work is once the Planning Board has finished its pass, and they will be doing so relatively soon, they will be having a few public forums to take public input on the entirety of the recodification, including the ADU updates. And then using that input to potentially make changes to what their proposals are, and then they'll have an actual public. And then the intent is that that would get, after the public hearings, which would happen probably in sometime in the winter, that it would get wrapped up into possibly into articles for consideration for the annual town meeting, under the presumption that we went through the public forums and the public hearings and, and there weren't, there weren't any gaping holes or other, other things that made, made us want to reconsider and delay things a little bit. So all aspects of the recodification, including the ADU, will be discussed by the public and provide, you know, input will be taken. So this is a set of proposals that the Planning Board is making right now, and they're not actually final decisions. And to that, and I asked the Chair of the Planning Board if the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen could meet after the, they've finished the recodification, and the Planning Board could present the summary version of the recodification with the ADU proposal to the Board of Selectmen in advance of the public forums. And I asked if they could set that up for October 19th. They thought that that would fit within their timeline for finishing the recodification meetings public forums. So that's the tentative proposal right now, that will give us an opportunity to provide input on all those facets and indicate to the Planning Board how we think the direction has been, and, and if we think there are going to be any sensitive areas that need to change, or if we generally are, are supportive and think that this is the right stuff. Of course, anybody will have the ability to comment at the public forums, but this will be something that it's mine to intend to take up on the 19th. Okay. Comments, questions?
Looking at the website and the postings on the website, the meeting on Thursday, the 24th, is not posted.
If you go to the town website, get on there, I just saw it there the other day. And if you type, type in 40R, four zero R, and should come up, then you should, there, then it'll go to the public forum. It says, public forum to discuss. Do you see that? I don't know, it, it may not be on the calendar, but it's definitely at, on the town website, and perhaps this is another area of, of where we can work on making things more accessible. I'm not sure, but you just type on, type in 40R and it comes up.
Yep. I'd say we need to do.
It's not an agenda posted in terms of the Planning Board itself?
No, 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 it's, it's.
It's not a planning board meeting.
No.
It's a public forum.
It's a public forum that the, that the, that the committee is sponsoring.
And that's not on the calendar?
So, should it be sure?
Yep.
But not, you know, again, not every, every. Where did we go? And he says there's a picture on the homepage.
Right. There's a, it's, it's, it's one of the bullets on the homepage.
I don't see it, but, but I, in any case, I do know it's there. I, I guess it's difficult to put every single bullet up there, I suppose, but.
So let's, tell you what, let's not.
Right, perseverate.
Page right now. But suffice it to say, there's things that we would like to tweak, and
Yep.
Clearly, people have some concerns that we need to take into account here. And let's not get, get into a process for dealing with it too much tonight, but.
Yes.
Message has been delivered, and, and Jeff and John off the priority. All right. Consent agenda. Board Selectmen Meeting Minutes from August 17th and September 8th. CALAS has a change of ABB, ABBCC Change of Manager application and an item from Parks and Rec on the Memorial Bench Program. Does anybody have anything that they want out of the consent agenda?
I have a question related to the minutes, but it's not to pull it out of the consent agenda for it.
So.
But we should go ahead with the consent agenda approval, and, and then I can raise that question.
So your question's not going to affect the?
No, it's a comment that Mr. Bowling made in, in the meeting about defining a process for, I'm trying to find it now.
Well, he looks.
Go ahead.
Well, he looks, there are two sets of minutes labeled April 17th.
Yeah, I agree.
Those have been changed. That's, that's been fixed.
Okay.
Okay, so on page six, paragraph two, Mr. Bowling would like to define the mechanics to restart the process. This is in regard to speed traffic issues, speed limits and traffic issues. Gather public opinion, develop a plan, and I am wondering when we start to address that.
Okay, you're right, we can take that after we discuss the consent agenda. Or vote on the consent agenda. Anything else that people have edits or comments on this consent agenda? Can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, in the discussion, on favor, roll call vote, Mr. Bob and Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Jakes.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Round.
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes. Now, as to the speed limits, so the last thing that we were going to do is we were getting, collecting a little bit more data, the speed data from from Todd.
We have some of that data now.
We have some of that data now, and we were going to present it at this meeting, and I did not put it on the agenda, and I apologize.
It's all right. I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure it doesn't fall by the wayside.
No, it won't, definitely not. And then the other discussion was around Mill Street, and likewise, that was going to be updated at a later date. So my bad, I will get it back into the mix again. Okay, and in correspondence, we had a letter from Clean Harbors regarding a release notification on a cleanup. So anybody, if anybody has any questions about that, I, I encourage them to talk to Gregory or chat. Okay, Town Minister.
Thanks, Eli. Just, it's a lot, folks, so I think we had a couple of folks in CALAS.
Hey, we are. I just, I apologize. I was just sitting thinking, okay, I think the consent agenda just approved the vote.
Yes, so you, you're all set. You're welcome to stay out, but you certainly don't have to.
We appreciate it very much. Jennifer, you heard that. Thank you for your.
I did. Thank you. You too. Thank you.
Congratulations on your patience.
I appreciate your efforts and your volunteering for this board, so thank you. Take care.
So, some updates on staffing. Today was Carol Muse's first day. She's our new assistant to the town accountant. And so Andrea's very happy to have that support for her efforts. She replaced Linda Ellis, who retired earlier this summer. So we welcome Carol and look forward to her getting up to speed and, and being a good asset in the accounting department. In the middle of reviewing resumes, we received roughly three dozen resumes for the town clerk position. So we'll be going through those in the next couple of weeks, and with any luck, be presenting to you a recommendation for ratification in the not-too-too-distant future, and how the process plays itself out, but certainly aiming for a recommendation to you by, by the end of October at the latest. We do have the mediation schedule for Police Union. Before the JLMC, which is the Joint Labor Management Commission, we're scheduled to be with them on October 13th, and are hoping for a productive day of mediation with the facilitator that they are providing. So that, that is going forward. As you, as you know, the, the court complaint was filed last week concerning ten on runaway and some activities up there that we would have had concerns about in terms of not complying with, with various town regulations, so we're hoping to bring that into compliance and that we can all move forward there. We will be presenting some more details at the work that's needed at Tuck's Point, in particular concerning the ramp and the floats. And at this point, it seems like the best approach will be to go forward with improvements for a new ramp and the float with pilings and have that positioned so that it can be easily reused when we need to replace the piles and, and elevate the rotunda, but not to try to do that all at once. But again, we'll have more details on that in the subsequent meeting, and we'll have a presentation for you on the design and, and our hopes for some funding opportunities to help pay for that work. Just a couple of awards to, to let folks know about. The Senior Care actually decided to honor all the council and agings, the directors, so that includes our Nancy Hammond for the work during, during COVID and helping our seniors get through what is obviously a challenging time. But the extra services and the extra efforts that, that Nancy, for us and other directors and other communities have provided is well, well-recognized by, by Senior Care's award for that, for their work. And in a similar vein, the Elder Brethren, Manchester Elder Brethren Group, they have their annual Slade Eaton Award, normally given out to one individual, but the Brethren's decided to award to all citizens of Manchester for the, again, for helping, helping neighbor, helping neighbor during, during this, this pandemic, and, and recognition of, of the many things, from, from the small and mundane to the more significant in terms of helping out your neighbor, whether that be picking up some prescription drugs or doing a grocery shop or, or whatever it is. So I thought that was a very thoughtful and generous effort of the Elder Brethren, and we have the trophy with the plaque, and we'll be having that on display in Town Hall for this, for this year. this, for this year until next year's award. So I wanted to make that known. You mentioned the forum this coming Thursday, that's at 6:00 PM, virtual forum. And there'll be also a survey that will be available during the forum and afterwards, trying, seeking input on what people's visions are for possible changes to the limited commercial district, that area that is on the north side of 128, Upper School Street area and Upper Pine Street. And lastly, just a reminder to our business community, we do have grants that we are able to give out to small businesses. These are dubbed micro enterprises. These are five employees or less, including, including the owner. And there are grants that are available through the community block grant program, federal dollars passed through the state. We teamed up with 22 other communities to put in a grant, to put in an application to the state, through the federal monies. And we've, 23 communities, including Manchester, were included in the award. So we have a little over $60,000 that we can award to local businesses if they qualify. There are income limitations that they have to meet in order to qualify, but we certainly hope that people will take advantage of that. The first round deadline is coming up at the end of this week. There's a website that's available. Again, there's information, we didn't, we emailed the local businesses, but if people didn't receive that, happy to get more information out. We're anticipating the second round, which will give more time for people to get their applications in. I hope to have that confirmed at a meeting on Wednesday. That'll be anticipating it. So we'll certainly push that out if there is a second round, which I'm anticipating that there will be in terms of a later deadline for applications. So that's available as well for folks. So that'll do it for tonight.
On the mediation item, had you wanted, or did the board want to have a board member at the mediation?
It would probably be helpful to have one of you, if you have the time to, to be in attendance. And typically, you know, the media will be trying to get to a yes. And so at a minimum, we should talk a bit more about it on the, on the meeting of the fifth. We can do that in executive session in preparation for the mediation, that it, it probably would be helpful to have one of you to use a bit of as a sounding board for me to see if you're comfortable with the direction that the mediator is trying to take us.
Select somebody for that tonight or wait until the fifth?
Let's do it tonight while you're here.
All right.
I would volunteer to do that if Greg felt that I could help out.
Yeah, I was actually thinking of you. I mean, it's not a particularly lovable project, but you certainly have a particular set of skills in this regard.
Yep.
I'd welcome that, Jeff. Thank you.
All right, Greg. We can talk about where that's going to go.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
All right. And I have no other matters, as might not have been anticipated by the chair. I just love the double negatives in there. And anybody else have any other comments or items that they need to raise tonight? And I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Bob Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jake?
If we must. It's been lovely spending the evening with you.
Yeah, likewise. Mr. Bowling votes yes as well. And with that, we end this biweekly installment of the Manchester by the Seashell.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.